It is 6:30. We have four more call workshop session order. Okay, first item on the agenda is item one of public hearing. I do have a card here from Jerry Gaither. From Jerry Gaither here. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. That's my wrong one. I beg pardon. I let go wrong. Tom, John.
Yes.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing, so you have to wait until we open the public hearing out front before we can have discussion on that. So we won't be having discussion from outside of just the council people on that issue back here.
Okay. She thought I might be able to, but that's fine. That's not wondering. I normally don't speak.
I consulted with, yeah, I consulted with our attorney. She said, yeah, we can wait till we open the public hearing for the public speaker.
Okay, that's what I thought.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Sure.
I think it'd really be the same thing for Jerry, too. He can tell you, I think, whatever he needs to tell you up there.
Okay. How are you all doing?
It's not a public hearing, though.
True. That was my difference. That was my difference, sir. I think it'll be okay unless council has different opinion. Does council understand that? Because it is public hearing, unless it needs to be opened before we have public discussion on it. Okay. Any questions from council on item one? Item two is also a public hearing. No, that, there's no action to be taken, except we will just continue the public hearing to the next meeting in April 7. Same thing with item three. Also, if action just be continued to April 7. Item four. There were some late minute corrections made, I believe, on that. Wasn't that the one? Was item four the one that you said at the late minute corrections?
No, that was, um...
It was the P and Z minutes.
That's P and Z minutes, not the council minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, the P and Z minutes on that related to public hearing one.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Item five.
Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. Hi. Today we have our, the city's external auditors from Weaver. We have Jerry Gaither, who's a partner with Weaver, and then John DeBurro, the senior audit manager, and they just have some communication they want to go over with you. I passed out a handout. Not that they're going to go page by page, but they're going to kind of just go, give you a little general on that. So if you want to follow along with this, Danielle, go ahead.
We appreciate, we appreciate that. We tried to combine, we issue a number of documents in association with our audit, comprehensive annual financial report and audit report their own, and single audit report, require communication to governance. And so we tried to combine all those communications into one document, so that we can sort of turn it to a number of documents. We could just go through this hopefully quickly. But today, I would like to talk about the audit process, the audit results, some of the required communications, some financial highlights, and bring to your attention some standards that are required to be implemented coming forward in the prior years. As mentioned, I was the audit partner on the engagement, and John is the senior manager. You'll find our phone numbers on the very back page of this presentation. So if you, later on, if you have any questions or comments, feel free to call us at any time. The engagement team, besides myself and John, was Holly Matthews as a senior. We also had an ACL data specialist assigned to the engagement, and IT advisory service manager, plus several audit associates that helped us throughout the course of the engagement. We've got a little slide on the firm, just in case y'all weren't familiar with Weaver. We're the largest independent accounting firm in the Southwest. We like to brand ourselves or refer to ourselves as the firm of Texas. We have offices in seven offices, all the major markets in Texas, over 500 employees and 60 partners throughout the state of Texas. Just generally about the audit process, the audit was performed in accordance with general accepted auditing standards, general accepted governmental auditing standards, and OMBAA 133. It's a risk-based approach to the audit where we identify areas of higher risk and allocate our time, more time to those areas. The risk areas identified were revenue recognition and receivables, payable, accrued liabilities, expenditures, capital projects, state and federal revenues, expenditures, and the compliance requirements. The audit planning began in August of 2013, interim field work and risk assessment in October. During that timeframe, we're required to perform walkthroughs of significant accounting transactions, determine that those internal control cycles are operating as designed, the transaction cycles. We perform walkthroughs on cash disbursement, payroll, utility billing, property taxes, sales receipts, municipal court and cash receipts, and capital assets. At the conclusion of that, we tested the accounting controls over cash dispersments and payroll, and also tested CIP in the bid process and the compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act. We're also required to test compliance with major federal financial assistance programs. The CDBG cluster was identified as the major program this year. Total expenditures in that program were 750, 853, which represented 51% of federal financial assistance, and we tested compliance with all the major compliance requirements relating to that program. During the course of the engagement, we received everything that we've asked for, timely and efficient manner. It was really, we're really excited about the opportunity to work with the city, and there is assistant help, help does perform an efficient and effective audit. See a little initial, or engagement timeline, interim field work in October, early October, field work December through January 10th, December 9th through January 10th, and we issued our report March 12th up through today, meeting on the 17th. In conjunction with the audit, we actually issued three separate reports. We issued an opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion was an unmodified opinion, stated that the financial statements barely reflected the financial position and changes in financial position. We also issued a report on internal control in accordance with general accepted governmental auditing standards. We had one finding in that report relating to the controls over fire department payroll and approval for overtime hours. We also issued a report on internal control over major federal financial assistance programs and issued an opinion on those program requirements. We had no findings relating to the major federal program requirements, and we issued an unmodified report on those requirements. The following pages are some of the required communications to governance. There is a separate letter that, that we issue relating to that, and I'll go through some of those. The first, the most significant one is our responsibilities to express an opinion on the financial statements, but it does not relieve management of their responsibilities associated with that engagement. As far as with GAGUS, we issue a report on internal control that I mentioned earlier, and of course, in accordance with OMBAA 133, we also issued a report on compliance with the major program requirements and issued an opinion on compliance requirements. We're required to communicate any changes in significant accounting policies. There were no changes in policy. The city did adopt some new accounting pronouncements during the year, but none of them had a significant impact on the city's financial statements. So yes, the biggest impact was the change of the wording or declassification of net assets as re-titled net position throughout the financial statement. There was no fraud or illegal acts that were noted, no material weaknesses. In terms of the other information included within the financial statements, we issued a relationship to opinion on the supplementary information. The introductory statistical information are both unaudited, and we perform limited procedures on required supplemental information, the MDA and the management discussions, discussion and analysis, and the general fund budgetary comparison schedule. The most significant estimates included within the audit was the estimates of allowance run collectibles for property taxes, ambulance utility services, and municipal court. Also included insignificant estimates were the liabilities for workers' comp, health and dental claims, and also the estimated useful lives of appreciable assets. We encountered no difficulties throughout the course of the engagement, received the normal management representation of inclusion of our engagement, and we're not aware of any consultations with management with other accounting firms. We're required to keep a, any issues related to independence. During the proposal process, the city requested us to assist in the preparation of the financial statements in accordance with governmental auditing standards. That creates a, a, a risk relating to independence, and we're just required to, to apply the appropriate safeguards to mitigate the threats to independence. And throughout the planning of our engagement, we, we applied the appropriate safeguards to mitigate any independence issues that we might have. There were no audit adjustments proposed or passed during the engagement, and there were no other written communications between us and city management. With that, there are a couple of slides on governmental activities, which is government-wide financial statements. Y'all can review those, if it's convenient, but I wanted to move forward to page 27, which is the governmental funds, fund balances. The fund balances of governmental funds at the end of the year were $91 million. It's the city's fund balance increased by 12.2 million, primarily due to 8.7 million increase in capital projects fund balance. As you can see there, it lists out the fund balances by major fund in the change from 2012. Governmental fund revenues, governmental fund revenues totaled 86.2 million, a $600,000 decrease from, just from year 2012. Some of the significant changes in revenue was tax revenues increased 6.2 million. The majority of that increase, 4.9, was related to sales taxes. Intergovernmental or contributions decreased 6.9 million due to a $9 million contribution that was reported from Castle Hills in 2012 that didn't occur in 2013. On page 29, governmental funds and expenditures totaled 86.2 million, a 3.6 million decrease from the fiscal year 2012. The big change in that related to decrease in capital outlay relating to just the timing of expenditures in the capital projects funds. Page 30, utility fund net position increased by $5 million, resulted from $28 million in revenues, operating revenues, and 20.9 million in expenses, and then contribution from developers of 2.2 million, and impact fees of 800,000. General fund budgetary comparison, general fund experience of 6.7 million favorable budgetary variance in 2013. Actual revenues of 64.2 or 4.1 million greater than budgeted due to taxes, which were 2.9 more than budgeted, and license and permits, which were 700,000 more than budgeted. Actual expenditures of 64, 4 million, or 2, 2 million less than the budgeted amounts. And that's really the highlights we have of the financial statements on the other item. Excuse me, I wanted to bring to your attention was a new standard that becomes effective next year relating to items previously reported to assets and liabilities. And the impact of that will be some reclassification of some items as deferred gains or losses, or deferred inflows or outflows on the financial statements. The financial statements reflect assets, deferred outflows, liabilities and deferred inflows, and net position. The other item that'll change is that debt issue cost will be expensed when debt is issued instead of being recorded as an asset and amortized over the life of the assets. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have about the audit, the audit process, or any of the financial information.
If there's any question? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
If there's anything that y'all see that you would like presented in this presentation, any type of financial highlights or other information, just let finance department know and let pass that information out to you. We'll add to, to put that information in there. Any benchmarking information that you might want compared to other cities, or whatever you would like to see, we'd be happy to present that at the end of the audit.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
One thing that piques my interest is this chance in 65, so, and what the impact will be.
Well, on the, you'll, you'll be required to restate beginning net assets for the amount of debt issue cost that is on the balance sheet as of the beginning of the year. That's not really going to be that significant amount. The rest of the changes are really classifications that'll make the statements look different, but instead of items being reflected as assets, they may be reflected as deferred outflows. It's just re-titled. And the same thing with liabilities, instead of liabilities, it'll be deferred inflows for certain items. It's, it's really not, the, the deferred gain or loss on refunding will be one of those deferred items. There won't be a whole lot. There'll be some deferred revenue in the past that would, would be reflected as a liability that may be reflected as deferred inflow based upon the reason that it's being deferred, so.
And then y'all will be here during the meeting also, correct?
You will be here during the meeting?
Okay, great. Case council has any questions, ask them. Item six.
I dare you.
Dare you, Ray.
I dare you to object to this.
Let's see.
Bobby Mitchus.
I think she's debating. I'm sure she's out there.
But it is her. Item seven.
Mayor, I'd like to have Cleve give you just a quick overview of this, in case you had any, this is a bit of an odd item in terms of what it's designed to accomplish, so making sure everybody's on the same page.
Mayor and council, this is a request to change the fence ordinance. I'd like to reiterate that it's specific to the fence ordinance and to single-family residential properties that are on corner lots. It's not going to be a zoning change. They'll still be the two fronts that are required on our lots for other structures. Since the adoption of the 2012 property maintenance code, code enforcement's become very aggressive with fences, in particular, along with other things. And we've discovered a lot of fences coming in that have corner lots that have enjoyed the privacy of that corner lot for 15 to 20 years. We're telling them they need to replace the fence because it's in bad condition, but at the same time, when they come to apply for a permit, they're told, well, you're going to have to move that fence back if you're going to replace it 30 feet. And so in essence, they lose half their yard. And then the way to cure that is to go to the zoning board of adjustment and ask for that to be approved. Well, we had seven at the time of this writing, and we now have nine without, well, we're going to, if we become more aggressive and keep going at this, we're going to have a lot of zoning board of adjustment hearings. So we thought that it was better business to say, you know, pay another $100, go to the meeting, and maybe you'll have the fence again, to ask that we change it so that that side yard can be utilized, just as if their neighbors or internal have the same right to use their yard. The only difference that we put into the request was that if a neighboring property without an alley or anything that has visibility but for some separation, if that front on that corner, your neighbor is a front as well, we didn't want to have the whole fence, the side of that neighbor's yard fenced off completely so that they don't make their fight by being, as it's closed off. So we thought it was better for those particular cases, because there aren't any, or many, excuse me, that they go to the zoning board of adjustment so that the neighbors could work on it.
Any question? Item eight. Item nine. Item 10.
Mayor, before we talk about item 10 out in front, we'd like you to adjourn into executive session so that we can talk about economic development.
551.087, correct?
Correct.
Everybody got any questions?
Can we go back to one very quickly, Mayor?
Sure.
On item one, I think you may have already caught it, to make sure everyone picks up on the recommendation there. There was a difference between a plan that was submitted to the P and Z and was subsequently approved for the P and Z and the plan that you're seeing now, and the difference is a fence line along the northern property border. At the P and Z, they had shown a, a plan that had a masonry column with wood in between the masonry columns, and they indicated after the P and Z that that was an error. They hadn't intended to do that. And what they intended instead was basically just a wood fence. And so that's what's on your item tonight, or your recommendation, is that you consider the ordinance as set forth, but require only a wood fence adjacent to the northern property line. If that's what, if you're willing to do that, that's what the request is from the developer.
So the request by the developer is to change the fence?
Correct.
Not to check, not the direction from staff, but the direction from the developer?
No, it just came up after the meeting from the developer, and it was an error that they said they had made in making the exhibits for the proposal to begin with.
And that's just the northern line?
That just affects, I believe, the northern property line that's adjacent. Is it the northern one, Nika?
Nika's back there.
Northern property line?
Yes.
Something's slipped me, too. It's the northern of the northern piece.
Yes.
Okay.
Northern piece, northern property line of the northern piece.
Eventually, there'll be a masonry wall there on the light industrial piece.
And it's one of the reasons we're doing a masonry wall.
I'm sorry?
Well, we'll trigger.
Development on that part.
On the light industrial piece to the north.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you for being here tonight, ma'am. Liz? Bob? Hey, where you at?
And we have made a formal submittal of the preliminary plat. We have met with the staff and city engineer, and there were several easements that encumbered the property, and at the time, we provided a 15-foot private utility easement because that was in the boundary. Well, we have since learned that that property, that easement, is, there's nothing in there, and we were gonna abandon that, and Jeff Kelly agreed that that is not a requirement. There's nothing there, so we can abandon that. So, what we did was, we have done a complete preliminary plat, those lots along Oak Bend and Vista Ridge, we basically extended the depth of those lots, and we have recalculated all of the lots, and we are asking for a couple of small items, because we have the advantage of doing all the calculations. And if I could, there is a control access easement, that is a requirement that I'd like to be included in addition to all of the items in the ordinance. And we have discussed it with staff, and I think it was a time, this is the time to include it, if we could. Can I show you that?
Mayor, I think...
I guess I'm gonna need to visit with my attorney here first. Okay, Rigs and I was conferred with, it's a little bit out of the ordinary, because when we have an ordinance, when we have the information presented to us as counsel, staff has had a chance to review it and make a recommendation on it. My city manager tells me this time, he's not sure what changes you're gonna be wanting to make and what he's gonna do, so he doesn't feel comfortable making any kind of a recommendation on it. And then, two, while our city attorney says we can add and delete things to an ordinance or anything, that she usually prefers to write up a correct ordinance that we would be voting on, which tonight she would just kinda have to piecemeal together. What I'd like to do is go ahead and afford you the opportunity to go ahead and give us your input and what the changes you're wanting to make and stuff, but then, at that time, we may want to let staff have more time to look at that and see what their recommendation be on it. You may have to continue this to the next meeting, but we'll go ahead and let it seene, and we'll go from there. Be there with you, sir?
That's fine. I mean, staff is aware of what we're asking for. I've already discussed this, and they...
Well, our city manager isn't, let's put it that way.
The documents that are in the backup do not conform to what you're describing, is that my understanding? You're changing something that's...
Well, what we're, what has happened is, we submitted a preliminary plat since the P and Z...
Understand.
And then, we have the advantage or disadvantage of a lot more knowledge.
Sure.
So, as we got through this, we got comments back, and then, it addressed this one particular issue.
But I have lots that were drawn up for the P and Z discussion, and what you're describing is different from that discussion, what you're going to actually develop is going to be...
Well, it's, no, it's the same, it's just a definition of this 20-foot control access issue.
It doesn't affect the lot sizes?
No.
Ms. Ferris, did you have something?
Mr. City Manager and Counsel, this is a plating issue, and would probably be best suited to attack this issue at the plat stage. I believe that's what Nico was going to talk about, but this is a plating issue, not necessarily a zoning issue.
That's why I was asking about whether it affected lot sizes, because lot sizes would affect what we have before us.
Lot sizes are a little larger, so it does not impact their minimum size requirement.
But they're different from what's in this ordinance?
But larger.
I think it's gonna have to come back.
Okay, and I hope you understand what I'm saying, we're not saying that we're against it or for it. I think what our city manager is saying, he's not comfortable until he sees a final lay of your design with the changes made, the lot size changes and so forth, before he can give a recommendation to counsel. Now, with that said, counsel can choose, if they so wish, to go ahead and make that anyway, but from what I'm hearing from my city manager, he would prefer we not.
Yeah, Mayor, I think the concern I have is that the P and Z had a set of documents which are made part of this ordinance, and this is a PUD, so it's a little bit different. The documents that underlie the proposal are made part of the ordinance, and if the documents show lot sizes A, for example, and then, when we do the plat, they turn out to be B, then I'm concerned that there might be a problem. So, I think it'd be better to have those lot sizes conforming exactly to what is being passed in the ordinance.
So, it's up to you, if you want to go ahead and make your presentation, now you can, or if you want to get with staff first and get those things ironed out, and we can continue the, we could continue the public hearing till the next meeting, which is April 7th.
Well, we would prefer to take over it tonight. I mean, the point is, as staff has said, we have, the zoning part, we're okay with all of it. I mean, we are meeting all the requirements. The lots along Oak Bend and on Vista Ridge Mall Drive are just larger than the minimum. Instead of being 110, they're, they're larger, they're 125. So, for the purpose of zoning, I don't see why we would want to let...
Well, the problem is that this is a planned unit development, PUD, which means that the exhibits are your zoning, it's not, it's something else, the exhibits themselves become your zoning, and so, if you show a lot that is 110 feet deep...
Aren't the, we, I submitted an updated, did we not include this, the updated plan as a zoning exhibit? I was told to submit that, so I thought the zoning exhibit included the updated lot size.
Okay.
I should have this.
Okay, here's what we're gonna go ahead and do, I'm sorry. We're gonna go ahead, and I'll let you go ahead and present your information, but then, I'm still gonna turn it back over to our city manager, let him give a recommendation, if he feels we should bring this back after he's had a little more time, and legal has had a little more time to view it, or if he thinks it's okay to vote on tonight.
Okay.
All right, so if you want to, go ahead and make your presentation, then we'll let, turn it back to them.
Can I use this?
Is that good?
Yeah. I don't know what the hell he...
In honesty, I don't have a problem with waiting, I just don't want to go back and forth.
I agree.
I don't want to even argue with him. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Everything needs to get through with yesterday.
No problem.
I don't know how to turn this on. I mean, the light's on, but...
But if, after he does it.
Oh, I see, it'll take a little time.
Zoom out a little bit.
But otherwise, I don't want him sitting there.
I'm just trying to figure this out.
I don't want him, see what I'm saying?
Go ahead and get what you want on there, and he'll bring it up on the screen, and you can adjust and zoom in or out. There's a problem.
Thank you.
Get you loaded up there in a second.
Okay.
No, absolutely nothing. I can't even go back to my monitor. Oh, there we go.
Okay. These lots along Oak Bend are now 125 feet. They used to be 15 feet less. So, that is the difference, that is, and I was under the impression that that was included as part of the zoning exhibit.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm...
Start over again, please.
Okay. There was a 15-foot private utility easement that ran along Oak Bend, and at the time, we did not know what was in there. Since then, there's been work done on it, the city engineer has looked at it, and there were several utility easements and setbacks to be abandoned with the preliminary plat. And we have since determined that there's nothing in there, so basically, all of these lots that are along Oak Bend are either 15 foot deeper or 15 foot, these lots are 15 foot wider, and these are all 15 foot deeper. I mean, that's, that's really...
And so, for example, you're showing Lot 14 on Street H with a depth of, is that 95 feet?
Yeah, that's corner clip to corner clip, yes. If you look on, across to the other, on the other side, between 13 and 14, that's 125.
And that's the, that reflects a deeper size than you had previously planned?
The minimum requirement's 110.
Okay, hang on a second, let me see what we got in the documents. Yeah, my document that's made part of the ordinance shows 110, so that would reflect the difference that you're illustrating. So, go ahead and finish up, and I'll have some conversation with the city attorney.
So, those are the changes we were talking about. There was one issue, and again, if this is a plating issue, we can deal with it at plating, that was the control of access easement on this lot, and if that's a plating issue, we can discuss that during the plating.
Is that different than what was on the previous?
No, it's the exact same. In fact, it's the same. There was no changes, basically, to the southern piece.
So, the same control easement was presented to P and Z is what you're presenting here?
Yes.
Exact same?
Those lots didn't.
Okay.
On the southern half, the lots didn't change.
Okay.
So, the only thing different in the site plan is that 15-foot easement along Oak Bend?
Those lots became deeper.
Those lots became deeper.
Or wider. Wider.
Okay, was there anything else, or is that pretty much it?
No. The other items, a plating issue, we'll discuss that at plating. I'm sorry to bring that up.
That's okay. Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Well, I think what we have is a set of plans that don't necessarily match up, it's certainly to our advantage, because the lots are bigger, and it's my understanding that the council can approve these new sets of documents with the larger lots. My concern, again, is that I haven't had a chance to see them, and I apologize, Mr. John, if it was our fault that the documents in my backup don't match up to what you have, but what I have is not what you presented. And so, again, my concern is to make sure that the documents that are approved by council are those that we have provided to you.
Can we approve contingent on his form being reviewed, and the only difference being those lots along Oak Bend?
I think, I think what city manager, and I think I understand what you're saying, is because this is a planned unit development, it's not like a townhouse, a state zoning, it's not like a R7-5 or R5, it's a totally different type of zoning request, and as he stated, the, the plan that's presented becomes a part of the planned unit developed, the zone that you approved.
Right.
And so, the zone that P and Z approved is gonna be, or voted 5-1 in favor of, is gonna be something different in what we're voting on.
Which you can do...
Right.
But I don't have an exhibit to show you.
Right.
And that's why I'm, that's why I... And that's why, that's why I'm saying the contingent piece. And if staff reviews it and says, okay, the only difference was that, then would he have to go back through P and Z at this point?
No, no, I don't think so. Again, it would just be a variation from what the P and Z approved, and you'd acknowledge that variation as part of your motion.
Okay. Is there anyone else to speak? Did you have questions of, wait, wait a minute. Do you, you can still answer, but I need closed public hearing is my question. And then still discuss it, or do you want to keep the public hearing open? It's my question. Okay, go ahead.
Are we approving the plat? We're just approving the zone. That's why I wonder why the plat's...
But it's, it is PUD zoning, which essentially has no minimums, no maximums, whatever is proposed.
But we're not approving the plat?
No.
Okay. Just the PUD and there would be the changes to the approximately 15 feet?
Right.
Can we approve the, or can we still discuss the fence and get that out of the way?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. May I ask any questions of the Speaker?
I appreciate you bringing it forward and letting us know. I mean, it's only with the detail of this, of this zoning.
Again, because we happen to have the advantage of getting more detail, it causes more problems, like I didn't realize.
It's a rabbit hole.
Talk about the fence?
Yes.
Was there a question on the fence?
No, I don't think so. I don't think anybody has any other questions. Okay, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Councilman Ferguson?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Have a motion, close the public hearing by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Durham. Councilman Ferguson?
I still have some concerns that I would love to spend a little bit more time with staff to, to go over, and they include the fence. There is an assumption that the property, because it is currently zoned light industrial immediately north, will later by that zoning provide the improved fence, but there's no guarantee that that zoning won't change. And so I'd want to understand better what is north of that, east, west, et cetera. And I'm not prepared to go into all that tonight, and I wouldn't ask the staff to. I would rather continue this to April 7th, and so that is my motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to, since we've closed the public hearing, can I still continue it or what? You tell me, Counselor.
It'd be better if we would, whoever made the motion to close the public hearing withdrew it, and we did a motion...
Well, I'd made the motion so I can withdraw it, and I'll make the motion to continue this until April 7th, so...
Councilman Durham, do you withdraw your second of his motion to close public hearing?
He's going to try to continue it.
No, I, I thought we had closed the public hearing. I was ready to take a vote.
Okay, and I'll tell you that because of our count tonight, if it does not pass unanimously, it'll take three more reading.
Okay. I will withdraw my second. Thank you, Mayor.
Parliamentary proceeding.
I gotta hit sometimes.
Okay, so now the motions have been withdrawn, so...
Motion is to continue this public hearing to April 7th, by which time I might also point out we could have a full quorum, so...
Have a motion to continue this public hearing until the next meeting, April 7th.
Second.
A second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Nay.
Opposed, one. So we have, so this motion will have to be read three times. No?
Because it's just a motion to continue the hearing, so it passes with three affirmative votes.
That would have been something.
That would have been.
I was told that earlier, Rudy Diz, and I wanted to make sure I let you know about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so motion carries. This item will be continued till the 7th, and at that time, I, I would ask that you get with staff and make sure that they've got a recommendation that City Manager and the Counselor and our City Attorney can come forth and have all in one piece together at this time. Okay, sir? Sorry for any confusion that we had.
Just one parting comment, too, and it may be something that's already been clarified, but with normal zoning, the specifications are laid out in the city ordinances. With the PUD, the specifications are laid out in the supporting documents, and that is the issue that, that we wrestle with in part tonight, is that we're relying on the documents. And the documents that we're being asked to approve, I have not seen.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Okay, item twos, public hearing, consideration of the service and assessment plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Five. At the March 3, 2014 meeting, City Council called for a public hearing to be, to consider the service and assessment plan and assessment role, which have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by the PID along with related information concerning the cost and indebtedness to be incurred. Revisions to the plan are currently pending. The Attorney General's opinion. Recommendation is that Counsel open and continue the public hearing until April 7, 2014. I do have a card here filled out by Drew Keith with Bright Realty Developers, not wished to speak, but is here to answer any questions if you have. Does Counsel have any questions? Okay, there's no action to be taken. The item will just continue till April 7th meeting. Yes.
I have to have a motion to continue the public hearing.
Oh, we do have to.
Move to continue the public hearing till April 7th.
Second.
Have a motion to continue the public hearing by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Apologize, Counselor. Item three is a public hearing, consideration of the service and assessment plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District PID Number Seven. At the March 3, 2014 meeting, City Council called for a public hearing to consider the service and assessment plan and assessment role, which have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by the PID along with related information concerning the cost and indebtedness to be incurred. Revisions to the plan are currently pending. The Attorney General's opinion. Recommendation is that Counsel open and continue the public hearing until April 7, 2013. Same thing. I have a card filled out by Mr. Drew Keith. Here is not wished to speak, but here to answer any questions. Does anybody have any questions? entertain a motion to continue the public hearing till April 7th.
Move to open and continue to April 7th.
Second.
Have a motion to continue public hearing to April 7, 2014, by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item, next item is visitor citizen's form. At this time, any person with business before the Council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the Council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have one to fill out any cards for this item. Next item is the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the City Secretary. Did not anyone fill out a card to remove an item, but I do have a card here who's not wished to speak, but here for any questions, is Jerry Gaither with, for item number five. If anyone would like to pull that item and ask questions, we can. Otherwise, you can approve the consent agenda. Councilman Durham?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, my Councilman Durham, approve the consent agenda, a second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Coffer. Where, where, there you are. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Item six, consideration of various requests to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-92J, turning lanes, Section 6-123B, landscape strip, and Section 2-201, fees related to the new construction for the Lee Walker Government Center, as requested by Bobby J. Mitchell, Denton County Commissioner's Precinct 3, located at 190 North Valley Parkway. Denton County is proposing to construct a new government center located on their existing property on Valley Parkway. Two new buildings proposed for the project. Phase one of the subject of the project includes a 40,700-square-foot building at the northwest corner of Valley Parkway and Civic Circle. Phase two will consist of a 24,000, 26,450-square-foot building on the southwest corner of Valley Parkway and Civic Circle. An engineering site plan has been submitted for Phase One and Two that include three variances: A, provide modified right-turn lanes on Valley Parkway to Civic Circle and Civic Circle to Valley Parkway; B, provide modified landscape strips along Valley Parkway and along Civic Circle; and C, waive development fees in the amount of $41,863. Recommendation is that Counsel approve the variances as set forth in the caption above. Do have a card filled out here by Commissioner Bobby J. Mitchell of 190 North Valley Parkway, Lewisville, Texas, and she does not wish to speak, but here to answer any questions. Does Counsel have any questions of Ms. Mitchell? Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I have no issues with this move to approve.
Second. Have a motion to approve by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Item seven is consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter Four, Article 10, fences, Section 4-453, general requirements amending certain single-family residential fence configurations. The new language is being requested to read. Where a single-family residence on a corner lot has two front yards as required by the city ordinance, and the residence is constructed facing one of the two front yards, the second front yard may be fenced in the same manner as any other side yard, provided that the adjoining lot does not have a residence that fronts the same setback. Recommendation is that Counsel approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve is written.
Second.
Have a motion, my Councilman Gilmore, to approve as written, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter Four, Article 10, fences, Section 4-453, general requirements and restrictions, allowing residential corner lots with two fronts, with two fronts by zoning ordinance to fence in the side yard with some restrictions, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eight is consideration of an ordinance approving a finance plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, TIRS 1, repeating the previously approved finance plan. Counsel adopted ordinance 3441-05-2007, adopting the finance plan for the TIRS 1 in May of 2007. Staff discovered a Scrivener's error which needs to be corrected.
Scrivener, sorry.
I thought he said... Recommendation is that Counsel approve the amended ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve.
Have a motion, my Councilman Ferguson, to approve, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, approving a finance plan of the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, Lewisville, Texas, repealing previously approved finance plan, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nine is consideration of an ordinance approving a project plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, repeating previously approved project plan. Counsel adopted ordinance 3442-05-2007, adopting the project plan for TIRS number one in May 2007. Following are the changes now being proposed, adding general goals, modifying non-project costs, adding project costs to the project plan, and reorganizing the document to improve readability. That's easy to say. Recommendation is that Counsel approve the amended ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Durham?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Durham?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, approving a project plan of the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, Lewisville, Texas, repealing previously approved project plan, providing a repealer, providing severability, providing an effective day, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, in accordance with Section 551, or in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.087, economic development deliberation, economic development negotiation will now convene in the closed session. Okay, we'll reconvene back to regular session. Item 10 is consideration of an economic development agreement by and between the City of Lewisville and Old Town Development Lewisville, LLC, approval of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $500,000 from general fund reserves and authorization, authorization for the City Manager to execute the contract. Old Town Development Lewisville, LLC has submitted a proposal to develop the 1.76-acre city-owned property at the northwest corner of Charles and Church Streets. The proposal calls for the construction of three high-quality restaurants and associated improvements that represent the peak of market demand for destination dining. Development will incorporate local architectural features to give the development a historical feel that represents the unique aesthetics of Old Town, Lewisville. Old Town Development will, will invest approximately $2,500,000 to develop the restaurant sites and will reimburse the city for the value of the land through sales and property tax payments. Cash payments will be required beginning the sixth year if the value of the land is not being reimbursed. The proposed agreement is for 15 years and includes a rebate of sales and property tax as well as reimbursement for building permit fees. Recommendation is that Counsel consider the agreement as supplemental appropriation as set forth in the caption above. I do have some speaker cards here filled out. First, have Sharon Ellis. Ms. Ellis, if you'd like to come forward and just give your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Sharon Ellis, in 340 West Walters.
Thank you.
Here in Old Town. I just, this is a great opportunity for Lewisville. I think with our new logo and all trying to get Main and Mill going, we have a real opportunity. We have a lot of developers that are really interested in us. Some, some of them are just talking and they're not here yet, but we're really on the verge of having a unique property and a unique area for people to come to. I would ask that you consider the best use and offer us the very best plan and be sure that the property is well-used because that's a, a very important site for Main and Mill and what we're trying to get going down here and what we're working towards. So I would, I would just like to use the word "high quality" when you read it.
Yes.
I would ask you to really look forward to just having high-quality restaurants in there, and I appreciate you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey Holliday?
Hi, Lindsey Holliday, 201 Oak Brook Drive. I'm going to speak on a couple different scenarios. I'm a resident. I own two businesses, and I'm the president of the Main and Mill organization down here. I filled out the favorite, or the support card in support, but I have huge... I filled out the favorite, or the support card in support, but I have huge question marks about this, and I just want you guys to make sure that we consider all options and that we understand what these people are doing with this property. This is a huge asset to our city, it's a huge asset to our organization, it's a huge asset to Old Town, Lewisville, and the Main and Mill District, and I just want to make sure that if this is approved, that we do this on the understanding of knowing what's going in here. There's been some things posted here and there, there's been some names shot out there of different restaurant concepts that are taking this. I just want to make sure that we're not doing something that's cookie cutter, that's down the road. If you look at what was posted on the Facebook page for the City of Lewisville today, you can see the concept names on there. I don't know if those are in consideration or not, but several of those concepts are within 10 miles of us, multiple locations, and if we're going to make Old Town, Lewisville, the Main and Mill District, unique and different, we don't want cookie cutter, we don't want the same thing as everybody else, let's make sure that we're on the cutting edge of the restaurants that we're talking about, that we're not doing something that has been done that is already plateaued, that's on its way down, that's been done over and over again. That's all I'm asking for, I just want to make sure that that's clear. I'm in support of this motion if it's done correctly and if it has a plan attached to it. Right now, everything that we've been shown has no plan attached to it, and that's the biggest concern that I have from all my situations. So I just want to make sure you guys have, you guys before you vote, have all the information about all the details. So, thank you.
And then I have a card from Amanda Ferguson, I guess she trusts me enough to...
[laughing] Okay, so basically she was pretty much, she's in support, she has checks in support, but she just wanted to kind of make sure that we know what businesses will be in there and what the end result will be.
Okay, those are the cards that are filled out. Councilman Gilmore?
Yes, Mayor.
I'll start with you, sir.
Comment.
I'm sorry?
Comment.
Comment.
Comments.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
I know there's a lot being kicked around, and rest assured that the folks sitting here at this dais, as far as I can tell, have nothing but the highest and best use interests for that parcel and for Old Town. With that being said, I think this particular project has some really interesting pieces going on for it. I think it will allow us to get that density of usage down here that our businesses so desperately need, and I think it will have a nice mix of restaurants and amenities that are going to be different from some others, even if a name happens to be the same. The developers are working with us to create something that's very unique down here, which I think is exciting. So with that, I will hand it off to somebody else.
Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I'm going to be opposed to this for a number of reasons. First and foremost, we've owned and controlled this property since 2001, so for 13 years we've been searching and seeking, and we have looked at, in my time on council, a number of different options. Some have been a lot better than others, but we've seen that there's great, great potential. With some of the other development that's going on in Old Town right now, we see that there's a lot of great potential that is out there for us to get. I think we need to be very, very cautious with our property that we control right here on Church Street, so close to everything else that we're doing with the MCL, obviously with our Plaza, obviously with our City Hall. It's a very valuable piece of property. Currently, what's being proposed is simply we're going into an understanding, an agreement, with the developer who will be leasing out three restaurant concepts as the contract states, these restaurants need to be, quote, "high-quality restaurants." I think the concern has been brought up, rightfully so, by Lindsey. That's very subjective, whose definition of high-quality? That is going to be up to the council for them to determine what is high-quality. And just as a side note, right now we don't have any leases lined up. We have two out of the three restaurants that are potentially, we're told, ready to sign leases. We have one other concept which we don't have that information, we don't have the developer, I should say, the developer controls it, that developer does not have the third concept ready, available to us. Now, when they bring that to us, again, under the agreement, this body will have the opportunity to potentially reject that if we deem that that restaurant is not of high-quality. And this is further discussion that we've been talking about. That developer, this property, and just so everybody has a real good understanding, this property is going to be, it's going to be restricted for 15 years that that has to be used as restaurant usage. So, no matter what, there's, we can't, we don't have to bring in a used car body shop, that's not going to happen. So that will be restaurant usage for at least 15 years. One of the issues is this developer that we get into an agreement with, and was this answered, Counselor, if you can help me out? I know we discussed it. If they potentially sell that property, what was the answer on this question? We no longer have control over the high-quality restaurants. That would be, it still would have to be, it still would be restaurants, but the new owner could then put in any type of restaurant that they chose.
Correct, the agreement is between this developer and us, not a third party and us. The deed restriction only restricts it to restaurant use.
So the deed restriction will go for 15 years, no matter who the owner is?
Right, the deed restriction runs with the land.
And our control over high-quality restaurants will go as long as between us and the current developer. Hopefully that relationship will go on for at least 15 years. If they, again, if they decide to sell it, we lose any control over high-quality restaurants. So that's one of my concerns is we don't even, we don't even know what restaurants we're dealing with. We do have some control over high-quality restaurants. And ultimately, I think it's obviously the highest and best use of this property. And as I implicated before, I'm very concerned about whether this is the highest and best use of this piece of property in Old Town. By no means stretch of the imagination am I opposed to restaurants. I think we need more restaurants down here, we need more food establishments, coffee shops, ice creams, lounges, that, we need to create a district, I've been saying that for years. The more restaurants we have down here, the better it is for all of our retail and of all of our restaurants down here. So by no means am I opposed to restaurants. I think this particular piece of property can be incorporated to not just restaurant use, but also to some additional usage, such as, and we talked about it a little bit in the back, and this has been, numerous cities across the Metroplex have incorporated something like this. This particular piece of property, this might be too small for the big plans, but if you look at Carrollton, they've incorporated some restaurant usage with four layers of high-quality residential above it, and I know there's arguments, how did they do that? And that's not possible down here. I would like to, myself, keep an open mind and hold out for something better. I think it could be upper level of art lofts, upper level of just higher-quality residential. And for that reason, those reasons stated, I'm going to be opposed to this.
Councilman Durham?
For all the reasons that Councilman Tierney mentioned, I'll be for this. We have been looking at things for a number of years, and we are at the point that we have something, and I think we need to move forward with it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Ferguson?
Yes. Boy, where to start? We certainly have kind of reached a critical mass in the Old Town area where, to keep the momentum going, I think it's important to do something with this property. Obviously, we want to do the right thing, but I'm convinced that restaurants are the right thing. It would be a great idea to have mixed use here and have housing, but it presents at least two problems. One is, I can't imagine a four-story complex backing up to the housing behind it. And secondly, where do these people park? And the parking that's going to be created for the restaurants is public parking, so if you eat that up with residents, what's left? And I see a lot of difficulties, it's just not a large enough parcel, and it has neighbors on the backside of it that are not separated by a street that create issues in trying to say, yeah, let's do a mixed use. I love mixed use, anybody who knows me and Nika can attest to this, knows that I'm a huge proponent of mixed use, but this property just doesn't lend itself to that opportunity. As far as the high-quality aspect, it's, the council cannot legally put that language into what runs with the land. We can put a specified use, but because, for starters, the language is abstract, it can't be included. So there is no way to create deed restrictions that say, it's not just restaurants, but it's high-quality. It's just not legally possible. The best that we can do is with the developer, make that agreement and make it as long as the agreement is enforced. Now, in a moment, I'm going to be making a motion, but it will include some additional language to make sure that that agreement stays enforced so long as that developer is still active with that property and has an agreement with the city. So that helps make sure that five years from now, if one of the restaurants goes out of business, they don't say, well, we fulfilled our obligation upfront, we're done, now we want a McDonald's. But if that developer goes belly up, I can't, we just can't legally put the fine, you know, high-quality into the deed restriction, it's just not legally possible. You know, as far as my opinion of the restaurants that we're looking at, one of them, as you say, has, Lindsey pointed out, has other locations nearby, but as Councilman Gilmore pointed out, the concept that we're looking for from them is distinctly different from what they have elsewhere. I think that will help create a different result, but the bottom line is, what we're looking for is success. We don't want to lower the quality of what we're doing in Old Town, we want to raise it, but we also want something that's successful. And in some instances, that means something that the public can recognize and say, let's eat here, rather than, I don't know what that is, let's go eat someplace else. Bottom line, I'm in favor of what we have proposed with one change. So I'm going to move that we approve the agreement with that change, that the requirement that restaurants be of high-quality that are acceptable to the City Council continue throughout the duration of the term of the agreement, and that we approve the supplemental appropriation as set forth in the caption above.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, and a second by Councilman Gilmore?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
As far as the motion goes, the high-quality of the restaurant goes, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Well, let me breathe and say it in plain English. It means that so long as we have an agreement with this developer and they change restaurants, that specification remains.
Okay. So, somebody else help me with this? Once this property is paid off and they own it outright, we no longer have an agreement, we no longer have an arrangement with this developer, is that correct?
No, no. We have an agreement with them for 15 years because the incentives go even after the purchase price has been paid, because of the other rebates.
Okay, so, once they, once the property's paid off and they own it outright, we still have an arrangement with them?
Yes.
Up for the maximum duration of 15 years unless they sell it or go out of business?
Right.
Unless the ownership changes?
Right. The contract, the agreement allows for them to have an assignment, if somebody, if another person wants to come in and take out and comply with all the terms of the agreement, then upon our approval, they can assign it to somebody else. But let's say they just go belly up, and then the bank takes it, we're second on the lien, so we don't get anything, and then there's a new owner, the bank sells it to someone, then this agreement, we wouldn't be giving those people rebates unless they came to us and created some other kind of agreement, but not under this agreement.
Okay, so the assignment can go with a new ownership group if?
If we approve it.
Okay.
But the agreement says that they would have to comply with all the requirements in the agreement.
And the requirement to be restaurants does run with the land?
Right.
For 15 years?
We do have a motion, second. Before we vote, I'd just like to say that we have been working on this for, since 2001, and I feel very confident in saying that if this deal had come to us five years ago, 10 years ago, we'd have snapped it up. This is something like what we've been looking for, for the downtown area, to bring in more people here. As several of the councilmen mentioned, it's been a lot of back and forth, how do you get the best use of the property? But that's not the only piece of property that we have. As you know, there are other pieces of property down here in Old Town that are really starting to move and change hands, new ownership coming in, there's new plans being developed as we speak. Economic development, economic development portion of the city has been working diligently to try to bring all the developers together and put pieces of the puzzle together, to make sure that they all fit properly, to make sure that they have, you can't just loke out and say, well, in this one little corner, it's better than the other. You've got to make them all fit in there together. So far, the developers seem to be very pleased with what we're doing down here. We think this will spur even more development to have, where we have more restaurants, we will have more townhomes, high-end apartment units, single-family units down here, all the way down to the rail station. And this is a very important deal, I think we've got going here, I think it's very good for the city, for Old Town. I've been here since '72, I think it's very good for this city, I think we're moving in the right direction. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, three to one. And thank all of you very much for your comments. Now, we're round two reports. Nika? Good job on getting some of this stuff that you're bringing into town, especially in the Old Town, not just the Old Town area, but all over the city. Thank you, you're doing a very good job. Thank you, ma'am. Bob? You're doing a pretty good job with parks, too, I gotta admit. And Chief, I want to congratulate you and Chief Kerbel both on your grand opening of our new Jerry R. Goller Public Safety Training Center this afternoon, that was just awesome facility, and thank both y'all for pushing us forward and making that come to fruition and give us something that will benefit not only our citizens, but those who protect us day in and day out for many years to come. So thank y'all very much for that.
We want to thank y'all for allowing us to complete that project.
It almost outside.
Thank you, Chief. Linda? Chief Kerbel?
I don't know what Chief feels it is.
Carol, I want to tell you what a wonderful job your department's doing. Our streets and sidewalks look so good, boy, that water, I love the taste of our water. You know, I hardly ever buy bottled water, I usually keep the old bottles and just keep refilling them up because I like our Lewisville water. People sound crazy, but that's okay.
We do that at our shop.
Good. Have you got anything else? We got some rain yesterday, hopefully that helped.
Rain, but it didn't make any difference.
Good start. Lord take care of it. Donna? Anything from you, ma'am? Rinda? Congratulations, your report and your audit and everything went very well tonight, we appreciate the people you brought in, thank you very much. He did a very good job of making a 50-page document condensed about 15 minutes, I was getting a little nervous there, but he did a very good job of that. Mr. Ferris? Mr. Bacchus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
I just want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day, and I want to share that I've been an Irishman for my entire life, and I didn't know this until I watched Matt Lauer this morning. When abbreviating St. Patty's Day, it is proper to do it P-A-D-D. When abbreviating St. Patty's Day, it is proper to do it P-A-D-D, not T-T, because that is for Patricia. I never knew that. So happy St. Patrick's Day.
Councilman Gilmore?
With skin of this coloration, I knew that. I will let everybody know, and this is a little bit early, but the Keep Louisville Beautiful Spring Cleanup is coming April 26th. We would love to have another record-breaking event. Every year, this gets bigger and bigger. It's from 8:00 to noon, and we have all sorts of great competitions. We have businesses that have been coming out and fielding teams, and it's starting to get, starting to get a little feisty out there. So come on out, help pick up your town and meet some other folks who are active and engaged and learn a little bit more about Louisville. It's a great organization and a great event, April 26th.
Mr. Keen?
One Quarter Irish. My daughter's name is Shannon, and I did spell it with a D. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Councilman Ferguson?
Boy, everybody's throwing their Irish claims out there. I still have a Spencer aunt that lives on Laughlin Drive off Ferguson Road, and that's from my great-grandmother that was at Laughlin from Ireland, but the Ferguson's were from Scotland. I've got MCL Grand. First of all, Laugh and Live, a comedy show that's being presented by CCA, that'll come up on March 21st. You can go to CCA's website, and they have more information on that. Buy tickets. There's also a silent auction. Wizard of Oz, presented by The Acting Studio, will be April 4th and 5th. Texas Tunes, Michael Martin Murphy is sold out, has been for some time. Good luck if you want to go stand in line and pray that somebody doesn't use a ticket. Healthy You Health Series, Food to Keep You Going, is being presented by Medical Center of Louisville at the Medical Center of Louisville Grand Theater on March 20th. Girl Rising is a film screening presented by Primrose Schools, and that's on March 29th. And then the Return of the Father-Daughter Dance, now labeled Denim and Diamonds, on March 29th, and that's presented by Parks and Rec. Art exhibits, we have elementary, LISD elementary schools on the east side in the gallery beginning March 21st. And after that, and I don't have a date when it changes, they'll be in there for a while. Hope Springs Eternal, which is a Vail exhibit, and the gallery is open Tuesdays through Saturdays, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., and always during any public performances in the building. So go check out the gallery, and we'll see you at the MCL Grand. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor? Louie, thank you so much for being with us tonight. We appreciate you being here. And Sarah, we appreciate you being here again tonight. Appreciate the work you do each and every day. And since everybody's throwing out their Irish with name Uker, doesn't sound Irish, does it? Well, my mom says we're a minuscule part Irish. My dad, he used to just nod and smile. But I did cook my first corned beef and cabbage yesterday, and I learned, of course, you've got to cook it with a good stout beer, like Guinness. Use that, beef broth, I did everything. It came out just wonderful. Also, my wife, who doesn't like my cooking, usually just went crazy over it. I will tell you that I learned that the carrots that you put in are only to sweeten the bitterness of the cabbage. They're not really to be eaten because the true Irish Catholics, the carrots remind them of the orange men who they dearly hate. And so if you want to really insult an Irish Catholic, you serve him a big bowl of the carrots.
Hey, hey.
To remind him of the orange men. But other than that, so we just had a few on the side, but it was wonderful. So hope everyone has a happy St. Patrick's Day.
Learned quite a bit tonight.
I'm going to wiki that.
In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, property acquisitions, Section 551.074, city manager or interim city manager deliberation of appointment, employment, reassignment duties, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, will now convene in to closed session. Yeah, I know. Will convene back in regular session. Counsel, is reaction to be taken?
Move to adjourn if we have enough.
Have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson and a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Glad it was unanimous.